The Topeka City Council Meeting will please come to order. I ask you to rise as you are able and give your attention to Councilwoman Ortiz for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, I'd like to welcome Pastor Johnny King. He's with the Bethel Apostolic Church at 3113 Kingstone Avenue. And it's a pleasure to have him here to pray for our city, to pray for all of us. I met him at my son's school, and he's truly a man of God, and he loves kids. So you know why I love him then. Pastor King.
Thank you. Greetings to everyone. First of all, I'd like to be mindful of the Word of God, to that we, first of all, give supplications, prayer, intercession, and thanksgiving for all men. This is for kings and those that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and a peaceful life in godliness and honesty. But this is the will of God. Let us pray right now, we all bow our head. Precious God, in Jesus' precious name, we ask you, Lord, right now, that you would touch God the minds and the hearts that are in this place. Plead, God, for a spirit of unity. Plead, God, to be in the midst of us, that we be of one mind and one accord. Amen for the effort and everything that you have placed in our heart and mind for the betterment of this city and the betterment of this people that's in this place and those that are in the surrounding areas. That you will guide and lead the minds, God, through things that would bring forth, amen, the furthering and the bettering of livelihood in this place and in this city. We be careful, Lord, to give you all the praise. Touch leaders, touch those that are in authority, touch those, Lord God, that would speak on the behalf of what we are here today for. We be careful to give you all the praise and the glory that's due to your precious name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first proclamation this evening is pertaining to Bike Month and the Bike to Work Week. Joining me is Taylor Ricketts, the multi-modal planning person of the Planning Department of the City of Topeka, Carlton Scroggins, Transportation Planning Manager for the City of Topeka Planning Department, Carl Fundenberger, Director of Topeka Operations at Topeka Metro, and Andy Frye, Director of Operations for the Topeka Community Cycle Project. Whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling as a sustainable form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and for quality family recreation time. And whereas the City of Topeka Metropolitan Topeka Planning Organization and Topeka Community Cycle Project promote greater awareness of bicycle operation and safety education. And whereas Topeka Metro Bikes, established in Topeka as the first city in Kansas to operate a bike share program, which resulted in 35,000 miles of rides since its inception and has expanded to 200 bikes. And whereas Topeka continues to implement its Bike Ways master plan, having completed 45 miles of on-street bike ways this year, with funding commitments for all implementation of 122 miles. And whereas Topeka has received an honorable mention for bicycle-friendly community status. Now therefore, I, Larry Wolgass, Mayor of the City of Topeka, do hereby proclaim May 2016 Bike Month and May 16 to 22 Bike to Work Week. So thank you all for your work and the efforts, and we want to encourage all Topequans, get out and ride these new bike paths and to Bike to Work. Thank you very much. Our second proclamation deals with National Travel and Tourism Week. And joining me is Rosa Cabazos, Director of Tourism for Visit Topeka. And then we have a proclamation. And interesting statistics in here. Whereas Topeka has a positive effect, we'll start that over again. Whereas travel has a positive effect on Topeka, the state of Kansas, and the nation's economic prosperity and image abroad. And whereas travel to and within Topeka provides significant economic benefits for our city, generating more than $390 million in economic impact in 2015. And whereas travel is among the largest private sector employers in the United States, supporting over 4,900 jobs in Shawnee County, and represents over 5% of all employment in Shawnee County. And whereas traveler spending directly generated more than $56 million in local government tax revenue, funds used to support essential services and programs. And whereas tourism spending has grown in Topeka three straight years, and more than 800,000 people have visited Topeka attractions over the past year, and visitor spending in Shawnee County makes it the fourth-largest in the state of Kansas for expenditures on tourism. Now therefore, I, Larry Wolgass, Mayor of the City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1 to 7 as National Tourism and Travel Week. Thank you very much, Rose. Apparently, you're doing a good job.
Thanks for coming on.
Thank you very much.
Now, Mr. City Manager, I believe he has a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to ask interim Fire Chief Tim Wayne and Police Chief Jim Brown to step forward to the podium as they're coming forward. On April 23rd, we had a very serious and significant event in the city in terms of police and fire action. And I don't want to get into a whole lot of details, other than to say, we don't often celebrate when we do a very good job. And tonight, we are going to recognize five members each of the Topeka Police Department and the Topeka Fire Department for activities and bravery that evening that truly impacted people's lives. Chief?
Thank you, City Manager, Mr. Mayor, elected leaders. RTPD guardians, the sheepdogs, provide overwatch for the capital city, as they do every hour of every day, looking over our flock, our citizens. This last weekend, a wolf presented itself in sheep's clothing and attempted to blend in with the rest of the flock. On Saturday, the 23rd day of May 2016, around 2,200 hours, our citizens were placed in harm's way. The first of many 911 calls from citizens began flowing into the emergency dispatch center after hearing shots being fired in the area of 37th and Topeka Boulevard. Our guardians, without hesitation, removed their cloaks and immediately responded as our community's warriors. Our officers were already en route responding to aid, three law enforcement officers that had been shot in the line of duty. The Topeka Fire Department was close behind, knowing they too were rolling up on an active shooter. And this is something normally our fire department does not do, respond to active shooters in such a way to put themselves in harm's way. But they did on this night, and we are very grateful for that heroic act of our firefighters. Our warriors, along with the fire department brothers and sisters, responded together. And together, we're able to bring the event to conclusion without any harm to our flock. Our first responders handled well over 100,000 calls for service each and every year. Many of those calls for service put our responders in harm's way. So it's not just to recognize you warriors and firefighters for that particular evening, it's every time you guys respond on over 100,000 calls per year as firefighters and law enforcement officers. Before you tonight is just a sampling of our warriors and firefighters. This is not all of the firefighters and law enforcement officers that responded last Saturday. This is just a sampling. They represent all of their other brothers and sisters that responded without hesitation, knowing exactly what they were getting into and knowing that three officers had already been shot. To you guys, our elected leaders, the community, everybody in our capital city, we're very, very proud of your actions. You guys do this day in and day out, and you guys are the model for other law enforcement agencies and fire departments to emulate. Mr. City Manager, we do appreciate your support. You oftentimes show up in hours of darkness to the crime scenes, to the fires. So we got you something. Sergeant? As you see on the back, now, now, one would think that your firefighters and police officers are concerned for your safety, and we want you to have the reflective gear on as you're running through traffic to find out what's going on and how are your firefighters doing.
That's right.
But maybe, just maybe, it's reflective because the leaders of the fire department, police department want to know when you're on the scene.
Don't not pull it first. Thank you.
There you go. But in honesty, boss, we do appreciate you and thank you for coming out at 1:00, 2:00, and 3:00 in the morning and checking on your firefighters and police officers, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Chief. Good job, guys.
I'm going to open it up to our fire chief now for a few comments, and then we're going to present our fire department coins and police coins to those heroes that responded that night.
I just want to thank mayor and council, city leadership, for this opportunity to recognize what the men and women of this fire department and police department do every day. They come in knowing that they may not be going home at the end of their shifts. So they put forth the effort, the training, and dedication to make sure that they're prepared. So on behalf of the fire department, we appreciate your service to your community. It doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you. Thank you all, gentlemen, very much for your service to the city. It is greatly appreciated and acknowledged. We will proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wolgass?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Clear?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
De La Isla?
Here.
Jensen?
Present.
Schwartz?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Harmon.
Councilmembers, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda. We will have two executive sessions following the business meeting. And then, prior to reading the consent agenda, are there any items that council members wish to request change of? Councilwoman Clear?
I would ask that H be removed and placed as an action item.
That will be handled. We will remove H, tort claim appeal, from the consent agenda and place it as Item C in the action items.
Your Honor, I would ask we do the same with Item I, the tort claim appeal for Vicki Fulmer.
All right. Item I has been pulled from the consent agenda, and it will be Item D on the action items. The clerk would read then the consent agenda.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Thomas Walcamp to the Board of Building and Fire Appeals for a term ending June 1, 2018. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sandra Clear approving a special event known as the Sacred Heart St. Joseph Parish German Fest 2016. C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sandra Clear granting Sacred Heart St. Joseph Parish an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. D is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz granting Anthony Williams an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. E is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sandra Clear granting Sacred Heart Parish an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. F is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as the 2016 Harley Party for the Boys and Girls Club of Topeka. G is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting Boys and Girls Club of Topeka an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 concerning noise prohibitions. H and I have been withdrawn. J is a denial of a tort claim submitted by Julie Gray in the amount of 1.3 million relating to injuries suffered when she attempted to cross the Kansas Avenue Bridge. K are minutes of the regular meeting of April 19, 2016, and there's a list of applications before you, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, that is the consent agenda. Councilman Cohen?
I'll move to approve.
Moves to approve. Councilman Jensen, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved as read. We go to the action items. A, an ordinance on annexation.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, annexing land to the City of Topeka, Kansas, in accordance with KSA 12520, located on the north side of Southwest 27th Street, approximately 368 feet east of the center line of Southwest Indian Hills Road, within unincorporated Shawnee County, Kansas, and adjacent to the City of Topeka corporate limits, and said land being annexed for all city purposes.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item that was brought forward as a discussion item. Mr. Feinder is available to provide information on the topic and also answer any questions.
Mr. Feinder?
Good evening. Thank you, councilmembers, your honor, city manager. And real briefly, to summarize, the owner of West Indian Hills Number 12 has requested annexation. And as we went over last week, this is a simple four-lots plan in subdivision. All city services are in place and would be affordable and compact addition to the city. We are recommending approval of the annexation before you tonight.
Are there questions for Mr. Feinder? Councilman Cohen?
Were there any questions?
I see none.
He's just going to move to approve it, but... I'd like to do that.
All right, it's his district. Mr. Cohen moves to approve. The ordinance, and Mr. Jensen, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance annexation is approved. We go to Item B.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson concerning planned unit development, PUD districts, and in City of Topeka Code Section 1819010, 040, and 050, and repealing original sections.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Feinder to provide a basic overview on this item and be available to answer any questions.
Mr. Feinder?
Thank you once again. As we talked about a couple weeks ago, we're asking you approval to open up our planning toolbox a little bit more on PUDs. These are the planned unit development zoning, and this would be on the smaller PUDs, less than an acre. Currently, we only can apply these in areas that are transitional areas. If we could open that up to apply to areas or properties that have reuse of buildings, we think this would increase investment in some of our neighborhoods that have some unique buildings that could stand to benefit, and we would be able to have conditions in place that protect the neighborhood while attracting investment. I showed you some examples of schools, or churches, or larger single-family homes that could really stand to benefit with the use of this tool. So we, Plan Commission and staff do recommend approval, and we ask for a motion to approve as well.
Are there questions for Mr. Feinder? Deputy Mayor De La Isla?
Motion to approve.
Moves to approve. Councilman Jensen, seconds. And this is in everyone's district, so no one gets first claim to it. All right. Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill, I just want to make sure that my constituents and people watching understand, when you do a PUD, you have a little bit more control of what goes in there. Am I correct?
That is correct, Councilwoman Ortiz. We don't use these everywhere. We use these in areas that are typically maybe transitioning from a commercial or office area into a residential, where you want some controls of how large the building can be, how much traffic can be generated, so that you have more of a compatible use. So yes, we have, these put protections in place for the neighborhood, and so that those are adhered to.
Thank you, and I appreciate you explaining it just like you did, because, you know, I have a big one coming up in my district. And so we've talked about that, so I wanted the councilmembers to understand that when we get to vote on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. No other discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance on the planned unit development regulations is approved. We go to Item C, tort claim.
Five C is denial of a tort claim appeal submitted by Bertha Sanders seeking the replacement of the storm drainage pipe behind her residence in an effort to alleviate future flooding.
Councilwoman Clear, requested to have it placed as an action item. Yeah, this is H, tort claim for Bertha Sanders.
Okay. I think after getting the information that I got and reading this, I would really like more discussion and to see if we can get a resolution, so we're not faced with the flooding issue we had for over 10 years in another neighborhood. I think we need to tighten that up a little bit and find a resolution for everyone.
So are you perhaps suggesting that we defer action until we have an opportunity?
Well, not until maybe a week. Give the city a little more time. I know he said he wasn't quite there yet. Give them a little more time to figure out exactly what they want to do.
Okay, I would probably suggest two weeks, because is that, you want to speak to that, Deputy City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, certainly, we're doing our best to expedite this issue and look into it quickly. I don't know that a week is going to be long enough to put any sort of cost, any kind of good costs that we can stand behind to these solutions.
So you have additional information you can add to this? Or can you just narrow this down on like five? Have you talked to her? I mean, I guess the numbers isn't the issue, it's actually deciding which option.
Yeah, I want to check with the city attorney, because this is a tort claim. It's something that's liable to go to court, so that we can't discuss to any great extent publicly. It'd have to be in a confidential situation.
That's correct.
So I think perhaps maybe to move to defer for two weeks, and then we can see, we can have a meeting, or if there's other information that can be shared with the council. Does that, Councilwoman Clear? I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
City Manager?
We think it's important to, you know, we've looked at a couple different options that we laid out for you. I think before the council can make any sort of policy determination, though, it's going to be important to understand what the financial ramifications of that policy decision is. And so we, again, we're working to get that to you.
Why would this be a policy issue, not just a decision?
Well, I think, again, that gets into our, I don't want to go into any illegal ramification here that's going to cause us some difficulty. City Manager?
Yes, so Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, I think what we'd like to request is give us the two weeks. Let us come back. We'll schedule an executive session. We can have a more in-depth conversation and address all the potential issues that are related to this.
Okay, so are we discussing policy, or are we discussing this issue? I just care about this issue. So I never really got an answer to that. I mean, I heard what you said, yeah, there's a claim, okay, but that doesn't answer my question. What's policy? I just need to understand how this works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Clear. That's a, I mean, it's a fair question. Any discussion that we're going to have is going to be particularly pertaining to this. To the degree that it enters into a further conversation, we'll deal with that as it comes forward. But specifically, we're looking at this particular issue.
Okay. Councilman Ortiz?
I would support the two weeks for potential lawsuit, because we have to be very careful, because we don't want to say that it's our fault, and we don't really know that, especially if that's our policy. So I would support the two weeks.
Do you want to move? We can have that.
I would make that defer for two weeks.
Okay, no, well, no. I'm still not quite clear. So we can't discuss because this is a what?
Claim.
A claim.
It is a claim against the city.
A tort claim.
And we can't discuss that because of legal?
Well, the aspect is, if we are discussing it, and we are then, charges or a suit is brought against the city, what we say in here can be used in that. So that's why we have it in a executive session, and then we take the action in a public meeting.
Okay. So we'd have an executive session in two weeks, they'd give us like new information, we talk about it, then it goes back on?
Yeah.
Consent or action item?
Right.
Right.
It'd be an action.
That's right. I'm just trying to understand the steps.
Okay.
Okay, that's great.
And you move, Councilwoman Ortiz moves to defer this item for two weeks. Councilwoman Clear, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the tort claim is deferred, action is deferred for two weeks. We go to Item I, another tort claim appeal.
It's denial of a tort claim appeal submitted by Vicki Fulmer in the amount of $6,450 for reimbursement of damages sustained to her property when the Topeka Police Department executed an arrest at the residence.
And I believe Councilman Jensen requested this.
I did. I understand Vicki is in the audience, and I would like to give her the opportunity to speak before we vote on this. I feel she deserves that respect from us.
Okay, and just to explain, since it wasn't on the consent agenda, she couldn't sign up to speak specifically on it. So we took it, however, she did sign up to speak in public comment. Since we move it to an action item, then we can have people speak, particularly for in specific interest and their own interest. So with that basis, if you would like to come forward and address the council.
I'm Vicki Fulmer, and I did send an email to everybody, I don't know if everybody got it, in regards to the house at 1326 Northeast Quincy. And I'm not in any way knocking officers, because I really appreciate our police officers and firefighters, because I think they do a tremendous job. I was there, and I was kind of concerned that I was not asked any more questions about the house, like the layout of the house, where rooms were, things like that. I told them where we thought he was probably hiding. The tenant also said that, and it was in a room that would have no windows in it. You know, there was a standoff for like three or four hours, and then they proceeded to shoot the windows out, and they did three or four rounds. But instead of like shooting... did three or four rounds. But instead of like shooting one window pane, they shot out every single window pane in the whole house. And I think that, you know, whether there be five rooms in the house, there could have been one pane in each window shot at different angles. And instead, you know, I've got a picture of the two front windows side by side, four panes totally, totally shut out, shot out, and there's no glass left in them, because they shot in, it's a little room, and every single window pane was shot out. And we could not even replace the glass in these, we had to actually replace the whole frame and all, because frames were damaged, the frames were shot, siding was shot. And I just, I just feel that there needs, if we don't, we would really appreciate getting some money out of this, because it was shot up, and we spent close to $8,000 on it, more than what we even asked for this claim. If not, I, you know, I for sure would like to ask that there be some kind of procedure, maybe change procedure, that they try to get hold of the owner, that they talk to the owner, they find out where rooms are, so that maybe so much damage doesn't have to be done in these situations again. So, I mean, that's kind of, that's in addition to what I wrote to all of you, I kind of told you kind of what happened that day, but for every single window, and you know, every window pane to be totally shattered, shooting these canisters in was very overkill and caused us tremendous cost. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmembers, are there? Councilman Jensen?
I would move to defer for two weeks, so we can discuss in the executive session.
Okay, Councilman Jensen has moved that we defer action on this tort claim for two weeks. Is there a second?
We can't discuss it openly, folks, so that's not.
No, I know. Well, is there a second to his motion to defer?
I'll second it, I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to defer action on this tort claim for two weeks. Any discussion on deferring it? Yes, Councilman Ortiz?
I don't have any questions for you, ma'am. I just want to know if it's appropriate that we could have the police chief come up and explain the protocol when these situations happen. Is that, are we able to do that, or no?
I think that it would not be a good idea to do that, just given that it is an operational issue. I mean, I'll offer the option.
It's a, and it is, again, a tort claim, that we'd be.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Ortiz, the evidence was reviewed by the legal department, and all those procedures were looked into, and it was found that the officers acted reasonably.
Okay.
I don't know if it would be a good idea.
No, that's fine, and your explanation is fine. That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion. Although, this is a, Councilwoman Hiller?
My only question would be, why two weeks? And maybe it's because of the executive sessions.
Just to give time for scheduling is all.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Maybe staff would have a better suggestion.
I mean, we could discuss it tonight, but I, we have a very full agenda, and I want to give the city manager time to fit this in where he sees fit.
All right. Any other discussion, items, any on it? We have a motion to defer the tort claim appeal of Vicki Fulmer for two weeks. All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have seven yes, clear, and, yes, seven yes, clear, and Cohen voting no.
Seven having voted yes, the item is deferred for two weeks. That completes the action items for this evening. We then go to the non-action items. The first is a discussion item, the clerk would read.
It is discussion of a lease agreement renewed with Singular Wireless for use of Montero Water Tower located at 6,900 Southwest Crestwood.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Robertson, and I believe that she is going to have Ms. Feeney provide more specific details.
Yes, I'd like to ask Deputy City Attorney Mary Feeney to come up and provide an overview of this.
Good evening, governing body. Singular Wireless has been leasing space on our Montero Water Tower since the mid-1990s. They've been a good tenant, they currently pay $18,975 a year for that privilege. Their lease runs out next July, and they have asked to have the lease renewed. And the reason I'm here is because city ordinance requires that when there's a lease of city property and the revenue is more than $10,000, that you all have to consent to the lease. And the lease would begin again in July 2017, it would run for a five-year period with four optional five-year renewals. And the rent would increase to $24,000.
Okay, it's a discussion item, opportunity to ask questions and get background on it. Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Singular Wireless was sold to AT&amp;T Wireless a number of years ago. Are we doing a deal with Singular or with AT&amp;T?
It's really with AT&amp;T, but they prefer to use Singular Wireless as the contracting party.
Fascinating, because they haven't been in business in years.
That's true, yes.
All right, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Those are the rules, okay. Councilwoman Hiller?
I'm not sure to whom to direct this question, but if I recall correctly, we've been discussing from time to time, replacing that water tower. And so, is, does the new agreement with its extensions accommodate the possible replacement and relocation?
It does. We anticipate that the water tower may come down at some point, and the agreement does address that possibility.
Thank you.
Good, taking care of that. And the other discussion, background. So this would be on the agenda?
Next week.
Next week for action, for approval?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, thank you very much. Presentation. Go to item B.
It is discussion concerning bicycles, roller skates, skateboards, on sidewalks, and pocket parks in the area bounded by Southwest Fourth Street, Southwest Eleventh Street, Southwest Jackson, and Southwest Quincy Streets.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Feinder to walk through this item, what's involved in it, what the policy implications are, and I believe that Ms. Robertson is available as a backup there.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Actually, I was going to bike through these, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, to keep the theme going here. Yes, we are going to have a discussion about a couple proposals, and actually, one non-proposal, as part of improving bike safety and pedestrian safety on our off-street facilities, which are sidewalks and trails through the city. In the last year, we've worked with our Bike Ways Advisory Committee on these issues, and it's really part of a larger kind of public education campaign, trying to get people more comfortable out there riding bikes, make sure it's safe. So what we have put together, we put together a bicycle kind of FAQ, and we were going to use that tonight, just to kind of illustrate the changes we want to propose, and also test your, test a little bit of your rules of the road and sidewalk chops. So, the first question, and you obviously have the answers in front of you, so you're ahead of the game. Do bicyclists have to follow the same laws as motorists while, when riding on the street? And if you're shaking your head up and down, that is correct, yes. This includes stop signs and one-way street signs, and something I get asked a lot, bicyclists do have to ride with traffic in the same direction. There's some thought that that's not as safe, but that is the law, and it is safer. Second question, where are bikes allowed to ride in Topeka? We're starting to lay down a lot of charros and silhouettes on the streets. Some folks think they can only ride there or on the trails, but bikes are allowed to ride on any street or sidewalk, except on sidewalks downtown, and we'll get to that in a little minute. On the street, bikes must ride as safely to the right as they can, and it's practical, but as motorists pass, they must give them three feet of space. Three feet's about the length of my, a little bit longer than the length of my arm, so if you can reach out and touch a bicyclist, you are too close. Okay, so that's your primer. Now we'll get into a couple of issues that we proposed for changes. Are trails and multi-use paths, those are the big 10-foot wide sidewalks that you see along some of our streets, are those just for bikes and pedestrians? The answer currently in our code is yes, but it's just for the Shunga Trail and Oakland Levy Unit. We also allow city maintenance vehicles to be on those. So, in our proposed changes to reflect more of what's going on today, we want to expand that, so that they, it applies to all bikeways and trails in our Bike Ways Master Plan. We also needed to add those devices, ADA, folks with ADA-assisted devices, skateboards, roller skates, and any government vehicle, whether it's law enforcement, or maintenance, or non-city. So that's the proposed change for that part of the, part of the question. Okay, next. In what, and I mentioned this earlier, in what areas downtown are bikes prohibited? On sidewalks? It is a large area. Bikes are not allowed on sidewalks in what is defined as the central business district, and we have a, we have a map here coming up that will show this, but that's a 110-block area. It's fairly large. So what we would propose is to drastically reduce that area to about a 14-block area, where your busiest pedestrians sidewalks are, which are Kansas Avenue, Quincy, and Jackson, between Fourth and Eleventh. That's, the whole intent of this was to really, is a safety issue. We've heard many stories of folks either getting hit, or nearly getting hit as they walk outside the storefronts. So, that's, that's where enforcement, we would propose to take place. And then we also added skateboards and roller skates to that prohibition in that, in that area, due to some recent events that damaged some of the pocket park and some other issues that are downtown merchants and DTI had recommended. So, that's, that's the change that's proposed. The map that I had kind of talked about gives you an illustration of how large the prohibition area is, and what the Bike Ways Advisory Committee had originally recommended was a very narrow blue area there along Kansas Avenue between Fourth and Eleventh, with some input from the merchants and DTI, that was recommended to include the 100 blocks on either side of Kansas Avenue, basically. So that expanded that into, so what's being proposed in the ordinance is the red, is the red boundary. Okay. Last, but not least, I said there's two proposals, and then one non-proposal. One of the issues we were dealing with at, starting over a year ago with the Bike Ways Advisory Committee, was, was looking into harassment legislation. Wanting to make sure that bicyclists, as more, and pedestrians, that get threatened, or are harassed, or there's acts of violence against them, that they are protected. We want everybody to know that they are safe to use our streets and sidewalks. In doing more assessment, we realize that, and as the question is answered, some acts of harassment are crimes already. If you're struck by an object, threatened with a violent act, or witness reckless driving, call the Topeka Police Department. So, we realize that the laws that were in place protected, already protected citizens, whether they're on a bike or they're not on a bike. And so, we did not recommend any changes to ordinances, but we did recommend to conduct more of a public awareness campaign to make sure people understand that. And they know that the city ordinances and laws have their back when they're out there, and this should happen to them. So, overall, this is fit into a larger outreach. Then I was going to have Ally Van Dyke come up and just kind of talk to you about Bike Month and beyond, what we were doing, and how this fits into that.
Could I ask a question first? And actually, so, we are not restricting, or Kansas Avenue is still fine for riding bikes, it's only the sidewalks?
Oh, yes.
Just, I think that's so important to clarify.
Yes. Yes, as the first question was in the entire quiz, yes, bikes can go on any street in the city.
So we're not prohibiting bicycles from Kansas Avenue?
Correct.
Only on the sidewalks? So they could be parked on the sidewalks, but they have to be walked or dismounted?
Yes, we use the term dismount, dismount zone, walk your bike, walk your wheels, however you want to say it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there another couple of other questions here, Councilman Jensen?
Just quickly, so as part of this plan, would we then put down charros on Kansas Avenue, so we have positive reinforcement as to where they're allowed to be?
Councilmember Jensen, we would not propose to put down charros at this point. It's, the route does not go between Sixth and Tenth, I believe, but it does go on Sixth, so the charros are not recommended to go.
Just because we'd recommend they not ride on Kansas Avenue?
There are routes, there's a master plan of where the routes would be the safest to ride, and we would, and so we would say Sixth and Tenth are more of the routes.
So, if we do signage then, for the dismount area, could we indicate on that signage then where it's safe for them to ride? I just don't want to tell people, no, you can't be down here with your bike. I'd rather say, we welcome you to our downtown, please ride over here where it's safe.
Yes.
However that would work, you know?
Yeah, we've been trying to work with some signage options, with, trying to be more of a, it's more etiquette than a law. We don't, you know, we want you to walk your bike on the sidewalk, and it would be, we don't want to have a big old, you know, X through a silhouette of a bicyclist. That's not what we want to project either.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thanks, and I'm glad to hear that, because I work downtown, there's a lot of bicycles during the noon hour and the rush hour. I mean, there's just a lot of bikes on the sidewalks downtown, so I'm glad to hear that. Do we have an issue with skateboards and roller skates? Is that why we included that?
So, there was some issues with some damage to the pocket park recently, and I think at the end of our process, this was thought to be something to also include as well as bicyclists. The human-powered wheels, or human-powered devices would include skateboards, bikes, and roller skates, and they can go just as fast. So, it is a safety issue, so it was included.
What about scooter? You know, because we have power scooters, then we have those, just regular scooters, not, you know, regular scooters and power scooters, but the ones that you stand on that are catching on fire. I forgot what those are called.
Hoverboard.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I'll have to defer somewhat to legal, but I, but we did take into account assisted mobility devices, so a scooter that someone needs for assistance, that's fine.
I'm talking about a scooter that you push, yeah. You know, you stand up and push with one leg, you know?
Right. Oh.
He says or similar devices.
You're, Councilmember Ortiz, you're talking about a razor?
Razor.
Yeah.
I think if you're going to ban them, you need to ban them all, because then I think people are going to get confused, and well, they had their razor out here, so why can't I have, you know, that's just my opinion, and I didn't know if we even considered that. If not, I'll go get my razor.
I'll get my camera. Okay, Councilman Jensen?
I would throw out, so the building that my lovely wife, Debby, and I own, the doorway that comes out of our second floor is very hidden, and so, somebody who's speeding down on one of these things literally cannot see somebody walking out of there until it's too late. And while we're lucky enough at this point, no one's been run over. I mean, if you're zipping downhill on anything, you're going to run over somebody walking out of that door that can't see you, and you can't see them, and I expect that's the case all over those buildings downtown. So, I do agree that, you know, it's probably not safe to have those guys riding at speed down a sidewalk full of people coming out of hidden doorways or pedestrians, realistically.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. While you're still here, Bill, I'm seeing a disconnect, and I thought we clarified it back at the Bike Ways, but let me check with you. The language in this says that it's, that the area is bounded by Fourth Street, Eleventh Street, Jackson, and Quincy. My understanding then was that, that it was only on the inside, that only on one side of the street on Quincy, and only on one side of the street on Jackson, that the street itself was the dividing line. The maps make it look like it's both sides of the street.
Yes.
So, could you clarify?
I can, Councilmember Hiller. We replaced, I think, the map in your packet, in your agenda packet, with. We replaced, I think, the map in your packet, in your agenda packet, with, with a more definitive line that goes down the street. It should be a, the red line should go down the center line of the street. The one in, in the presentation tonight, I noticed, still was bumped out a little bit.
I just wanted people to know.
You are correct. Mm-hmm. Yes, that one's correct.
Yeah, there's, there was one in this, in the handout, in front of us. And then you had another part of the presentation?
Yes, and to put a kind of a capper on this, we would like to, I'd like to have Ally come up and just brief you on how we're getting the word out about harassment and some other of the bike, public outreach efforts for this month and beyond.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill. So I kinda wanted to start on the harassment, the non-proposal he was talking about. We're gonna do a Topeka in Two, that's our two-minute program, video program that we've been doing. We're gonna do that on our harassment ordinances, which kind of sounds boring when I say it like that, but we've kind of made it fun. The, I'm not really sure who sent out a survey about our, like, harassment, like, have you been harassed in the city on your bike? And people actually wrote in things that have happened to them while they're in the city. So we took some of those actual responses from real people, and had city staff, Lisa was one of them, and bikeways committee members read them, and we're going to put that in the video with like a stamp of, you know, that's assault, or that's reckless driving, so that people are kind of more educated, and I think empowered when they take to our sidewalks and streets. We're also working on some PSAs around that, and bikeways education. We've already reached out to WIBW and KSNT to kind of get a little bit more out there with the videos that the team makes, which are really incredible. If you guys have a chance, you should look on our YouTube page and check out the Topeka Intues, they're really cool. We're also working on a social media education campaign, so COT Bike Ped is the official City Bikeways and Pedestrian Information Twitter handle. If you're not on Twitter, we're gonna be compiling all of that into a blog and crossposting it on Facebook and Nextdoor. So, get on one of those if you aren't already. And then, as far as the rest of Bikeways Month goes, we're working on getting some time with Ralph Hip on his Red Couch, which has been a really great program, that, we're glad it's back. Getting live on the radio, and we already have a website with a lot of information on it, too, actually, Bikeways and Ped Plans, so promoting the stuff that we've already kind of done a little bit better. And then one of the main things from the bikeways committee that I heard was that it's great that May is Bike Month, but people bike throughout the summer and fall, so don't just end the education campaign in May. So we're gonna be keeping, you know, continuing to roll stuff out throughout the rest of the year, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank, thank you, it's important, I'm sure, that providing the background.
I would just summarize by saying, so, we would have an ordinance drafted, and with those two proposals, the one for downtown sidewalks, and the other one for the levees and trails, to make sure that those are authorized just for bikes and pedestrians, and the other users we added, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. We have some persons signed to speak on the issue. First is Linda Windler.
I'm Linda Windler, 116 Southeast 8th Avenue, which is across the street. My husband and I live downtown, we've lived here for decades, we've run a business here for decades. We own the property, we own the building, we've remodeled it from top to bottom. I'd like to direct a question right off, because what I just heard-
This is just, okay, this is time to present, we'll see what the question is.
Okay, well, the question I have, what I just heard, was that this was tacked on to the end of this, after all this research, from some damage that happened just recently. This damage has been going on for decades, and we've been complaining about it for decades. In fact, we chased down some of the BMX freestyle bikers, which is an entirely different thing than ordinary biker that most of us are aware of. These are jump bikes, these are for doing stunts, these are for showing off how they can leap their bikes up onto architectural objects and skitter them along. They have these little six-or-so-inch pegs that stick out. They don't move, they're static. And they get a good run-up, and they leap up onto something, and they'll skitter along like the granite wall, you can all look at it, down at Jackson and 8th Street, the bank there, ruined. The granite is chipped off, chipped off, chipped off. Where they leap these things up with momentum, they skitter along it, like this, and then down they go again, and then they're at it again. They can do tens of thousands of dollars' worth of damage in seconds. That's the BMX bikers. The other problem is the roller boarders, not roller skaters. Roller skating and roller boarding, skateboarding are not the same thing. And we constantly have problem with not just people that want to skateboards down the sidewalk, they're fine, you know, they're great. It's the ones that want to jump up on architectural objects, railings, walls, you know, granite, concrete, et cetera, statuary, whatever, has something they can go along on like this. They, they've done it on the rails, out here in front of a building here, where paint is chipped off. They do it all over downtown. These are the jumpers, jump bikers, jump skateboarders. It's not skaters, it's not just plain, you know, roller boarders, it's not just plain bikers, it's the jump stunt stuff. Tacking this onto this ordinance is a huge mistake. I'm 100% in favor of doing something about all this damage. I wrote this big, long speech I'm giving you, but I changed everything I wanted to say when I heard the lack of education about what's going on, go into this, oh, just this weekend we had a problem. No, and we didn't have a problem, and in all my decades of being here, I've not seen one roller skater do this. And if it was a roller skating doing this, it would be specifically someone with inline skates. I skate, you don't do that with four-wheeled, traditional skates, you just don't. The only jumping anybody does with those is at a roller rink in a competition with special jump bars on their skates. I used to go from our business, across Kansas Avenue, down to the bank on Jackson, on my roller skates, to the drive-up window. Then one day I went to a festival that was out in front of our building on my roller skates. Am I out of time? I guess I am.
You have one more minute to, to close.
And I was skating, and a police officer, and this is years and years ago, and a police officer came up to me and he says, just make sure you don't skate on up to Kansas Avenue, because it's illegal to skate on Kansas Avenue. I was shocked, I couldn't believe it, I had no idea. I still don't have any idea, 'cause no one else seems to know anything about this ordinance that supposedly was already in place. From then on, I would go almost to Kansas Avenue, sit on the curb, take my skates off, walk across the street barefoot, go sit on a curb, put my skates back on, and go onto the bank and do the same action coming back. I did this because I was told it was illegal. I was, at that time, it wasn't illegal, it's apparently, but I was being treated in a way that had no cause, there was no purpose in it, because skaters were not doing any kind of damage, and I was not going to do any kind of damage. This is wrong to do this. We need to address, not the contraption, you didn't include pogo sticks, they could jump on the stuff with pogo sticks and break it. We need to-
Okay. You're concluding then?
Yeah. We need to address the using architectural objects as a playground in downtown, regardless what hardware they're using to destroy them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Merle Windler?
If you haven't guessed, I'm her husband.
Okay.
I had no idea what she was gonna say.
Yeah.
But Karen knows exactly what I'm gonna say, because I sent it to her earlier today, and I'm old, I gotta take these off. So, thank you for listening to this. My name's Merle Windler, live right across the street. The problem is not roller skates, skateboards, or bicycles. It's the persons that choose to do trick jumps and leave the ground, leaping on walls, buildings, benches, handrails, and anything else they can find of interest in downtown. A seemingly abandoned downtown becomes a trick jumper's paradise, late at night and on weekends. In three decades of working, living, and owning property downtown, I've never seen a roller skater in downtown do anything but skating. The new tech, computer techs, programmers, and staff, if those of you remember those from decades ago, roller skated all over the downtown sidewalks late at night, lots of nights, and I never once saw any of them do anything to cause property damage. On nice weekend days, I commonly see families with children on bicycles, riding to the Capitol, and all around the streets, and the sidewalks of downtown, and they're not hurting a thing. It's not skateboarders, it's not bicycle riders, it's not roller skaters. The problem is jump trick skateboarders, and jump trick bikers, leaping on things, causing damage that are the problem. The problem's when the person chooses to leave the ground and leap onto things, many times resulting in some amount of damage to the object subjected to the jump. It's all the downtown area, not just Kansas Avenue, that needs to be protected. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars in existing damages, and growing all the time. It's a serious issue, even if some people think it's not. It has to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars in damage to downtown Topeka from these jump trick bikers and jump trick skateboarders over the years. All over downtown, you'll find chipped and scraped marble, granite, concrete, benches, and property fronts, all over. Even the handrails on the steps of this building, the ones especially on the west end, you'll see they're all scraped up and the paint scraped off, from people jumping on the rails and sliding down. I see them often as I walk around downtown a lot, even though it doesn't look like it. Usually late in the evenings, after 8:00 PM, and on weekends, at least twice a week, I see them, jumping on everything in sight, doing damage all over downtown. The parking garage just a few doors east of the Celtic Fox on 8th Street seems to be one of their favorite spots, I see them there constantly, even though there's a sign that says no skateboards and stuff. All the new things to jump on, on Kansas Avenue, seem to be a new favorite. Karen and several others DTI know, we called the police multiple times in the last week. Some of you know, I could go on and on, but I won't. Thanks for your help and attempt to put a stop to the carnage. I agree wholeheartedly with the goal of this ordinance, and the concept, and your thoughts, that something has to be done to put a stop to this. But let's not throw out the baby with the dishwater, or the bathwater, I guess is the expression. You, I, I only ask that you give this more thought, and make sure that we're addressing the problem, not the devices used in generating the problem. So downtown can be a place where all of us can live, work, and play. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. You're very, very helpful. Next is Vince Frye.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Vince Frye, President of Downtown Topeka Incorporated. I appreciate the Windlers' comments. They, better than anyone, have seen the damage and what has happened over many years of time. We've seen pictures that the Windlers have documented of some of the, the problems that have been created. We've met with merchants, we've met with residents, we've met with city staff, the bikeways committee, we've studied ordinances from Lawrence, Manhattan, and we are in agreement as an association to support this ordinance. Mayor, you're, you're looking like you're, sorry, sorry. But we do feel that this is important. We, we welcome everybody downtown, we want this to be inclusive of everybody, but we also feel that it's a safety issue, and because of that, why we support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next is Ramon Mamudion.
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilmember, City Manager. My name's Rameen Mamudion, I'm a community member here in Topeka. Just had a few words on the issue. As many of us know, there have been a lot of efforts to revitalize downtown over the past few years, especially on Kansas Avenue. There are many components that make up a downtown, the infrastructure, the building, the pocket parks, and the people that live, work, and play in downtown. In Hyon Gell's book Cities for People, he says, if you want people to do something, you must invite them to do so. Topeka has invited people to use downtown again. Bikers and skaters, along with pedestrians, have began to use downtown more and more since the improvements. The presence of these community members increases the vitality of the area, and by using alternative methods of transportation, they are reducing traffic and creating a healthier city. These citizens have incorporated these activities into their daily lives, and should be able to use the city freely. If restrictions must be placed on biking and skating, I believe it should be done so in a way that still encourages people to use downtown. The initially proposed dismount zone at Kansas Avenue would provide great access for cyclists. There are several bike racks, excuse me, there are several bike racks on the avenue, and bikers would not be there long before finding a place to stow their bike. And that, that's the area that would be just Kansas Avenue, so. Skaters normally travel at a different rate of speed than bikers, and therefore pose less of a potential harm to pedestrians. I propose that they be allowed to skate on the sidewalks, but restricted from doing tricks in the parks. I also propose that a skate park, either interior or exterior, be built somewhere in downtown to provide an outlet for the skaters and maintain their presence in the area. Many people who would enjoy, who would enjoy skating down the street peacefully would never have the opportunity to do so, and I believe that as more pedestrians populate the area, you will see less and less occurrences of skaters and pedestrians coming into conflict. Thank you.
Thank you, Rameen, for your comments.
Yep.
Appreciate those. Next is Andy Frye. Andy Frye, I don't see Andy. Okay. That completes the public comment on this item. Councilmembers, it is a discussion item, any other comments you wish to make? That's an item. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, as you can imagine, representing District 1, including downtown and the bikeways and so on, I've been immersed in this quite a bit, and I've struggled to sort of separate the issues. And just as you, as we go forward thinking about it, if I can, I, I see it separating to three issues, one of which is addressed by the ordinance, and the other two are not. The one that's addressed by the ordinance is the issue of safety on the sidewalk, you know, and should there be anybody on wheels going up and down the sidewalk when we have reconstructed them so that there are more people living, working, strolling, playing on those sidewalks? The bikeways folks had come to terms with that, had worked on it a long time, and had agreed that, that they wanted, they were agreeable to, to seeing bicycles regulated in terms of riding on the sidewalks. Their thought was that with that prior big, big area that really wasn't enforced, nobody knew where the zone was, that after much discussion, that it made sense to just start anyway by having it just on Kansas Avenue from 4th to 11th. It was sort of intuitive, that's where the most people would be walking, and so on, the most exits and entrance to residences and doors, and so on. When the skateboard issue came up, which the bicyclist really hadn't addressed, the downtown folks wanted to, to stretch that, a block either side of Kansas Avenue, just for a little more coverage, if I can paraphrase that. I think for us to think about it, it's, it's, what's the best district there? Pretty much has been consensus that the wheel, ought to be wheels up on the avenue. And the issue is, is it gonna be intuitive? Will people realize that anything off the avenue is, is covered? Will it be enforced the way the avenue itself, which isn't easy to see and easy to enforce, would be done? So, those are the issue, that's how I've seen the issue emerge in terms of the ordinance that we have at hand. The second issue is damage, people doing criminal damage, and, and that really is separate from this ordinance. People struggle with that a lot, there was a lot of upset when the skateboarders first came and damaged at Westar, and, and for good reason. As, as people sort of process that, the issue is, it's illegal to damage property already, and nobody should be doing that. There has been some frustration about calling law enforcement, and getting help, and getting people run off when they are where they don't belong, or when they're causing damage. That's more of an administrative issue than, than changing the policy itself, but it might be something for all of us to consider in terms of whether we, as a body, for instance, as the city manager- as the city manager, to, and the chief, to step up the enforcement so that the damage doesn't occur. I know that already, people who are designing some of the improvements and amenities on Kansas Avenue are being a little more careful to design in architectural features that would discourage skaters, or trick bikers, I guess as well, from being on those benches and walls and so on, so that will help. The third issue that I would ask about, as Councilwoman Jensen said, bicyclists can be on the street, so they can get close to their destinations, find a bike rack, dismount, and go. It turned out, turns out that skateboards are not supposed to be, whether it's a longboard or a shortboard or scooter or whatever, are not supposed to be on the street. They're considered by other levels of law as pedestrians and that they're to be on the sidewalks and not on the street. So I think a question for us to perhaps pose would be, okay, is there going to be enforcement downtown anyway to keep those boarders and scooters off the street? That would, to some extent, solve access issues where they've been going down alleys and then getting into private spaces and doing tricks and so on. Would help the businesses that have been suffering for a while. But that's really the issue, whether those borders of any kind can be downtown. It's complicated. If they can't be on the sidewalk and they can't be on the street either, they've got to walk. And there are people who are commuting. I mean, I've been downtown and watched people who've clearly ridden across town, that's their transportation to get to downtown. But perhaps just, again, are you going to have to walk your wheels for two blocks or just half a block? Something to think about.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Karen brings up a good point, because, you know, when we have the parades, you know, if they're not allowed in the street, what are we going to do then when the parades happen? Because everybody rides their scooters or their...
Well, I'm sure it's...
Or, you know, skate... I'm just saying. I'm just saying, if it, you know, we got to make it perfectly clear so everybody understands. And I think even with bicyclists riding downtown, they're not clear that they're not supposed to be on the sidewalks.
That's right.
They're not clear at all, because they holler at us to, you know, get out of the way. So they're, you know, I'm glad to see the educational part of that.
Yeah, and I was going to say, that's, hopefully, we'll be able to do education and help bring everybody along where we're together on this.
And I hope that the bicycle shop that we have downtown, that we could give them alley, some type of pamphlet or something to give out when they are giving those bicycles out, I think that would be helpful, because, you know, we have a lot of homeless and a lot of people from the Mission, a lot of homeless people, a lot of low-to-monet income people riding bikes. They go down there and they get those bikes, and they're good bikes, but we need to educate them so that they totally understand. And they ride 365 days out of the year, because that is their transportation. And I, you know, I seen somebody kind of frown when Karen said, "Yeah, I've seen somebody ride a skateboard all the way across town." That's what they do.
Right. Other discussion items? Seeing none, that completes our discussion, and there will be an ordinance on this next week, if that's, have that ready. All right. We go to Item C, discussion on the proposed charter ordinance implementation.
C is discussion concerning a proposed ordinance that implements Charter Ordinance Number 117, which addresses election changes and governing body procedures.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Ms. Robertson to address this item.
Thank you, City Manager. Governing body, you have for you a, hopefully, a little color-coded table that I placed at all of your seats. It briefly goes through, and I think easily addresses the major changes that were made to what I've called an ordinary ordinance. Back in February, you all passed revisions to the charter ordinance. That went into effect after the 60-day waiting period on April 23rd. Therefore, we need to make some changes to the ordinary ordinance in order for it to comply and be in alignment with the charter ordinance. So, if you wouldn't mind, I think what I'm going to do is just go through each of these, and I've put line numbers, section numbers, and everything else, so you can follow along fairly easily. The first issue would be vacancies, and these, again, are fairly minor changes. So, this would be found in Section 3, Subsection I-5, and that's at the top of Page 6, in lines 123 through 125. Basically, the reason for this change is to be in compliance with the new charter ordinance, and it changes the voting requirements of the governing body from 5 to 6, required for any governing body action, to fill a vacancy on the council, which we'll be doing that soon, so timely. The next change, major change, is the governing body meetings. That's in Section 1, Subsection A, on Page 1, at lines 17 through 19. This has to do with the changes that were made to the election law, which are now reflected in the charter ordinance. It basically changed... Council meetings are the first three Tuesdays of every month, as you know, but there needed to be one minor change for the first council meeting immediately after the November election. So it will provide for a second meeting in Monday, on the second Monday after the election in January.
You know, just stop. If we have a question as we go through these, Councilwoman Ortiz, question?
I guess I don't understand that. Why would we have a meeting on Monday? Because of the new law?
The state law requires that. Since they changed the election laws, the elections will now be in November, and it provides that the first meeting of the council will be on the second Monday in January. That would be when the new council convenes.
But we'll have a meeting on the second Monday, and then the...
After the November election.
Third Tuesday.
Yeah.
Then how will we have three meetings if we have...
It would just be on Monday for that particular week as opposed to the Tuesday.
Oh, for that week?
Mm-hmm. So you'll still have three meetings.
It'd just the first one. And that's because of the state election.
Yes.
And I think...
It's in the KSA 25-2120.
I think the state legislators are sworn in on a Monday. Like, all the county offices are, they're sworn in on a Monday, so they're making us be consistent with everybody else, and we do it on Monday. And then we can go back and have our meetings any night we want, and we do on Tuesday. For better or worse, you know?
Well, swearing.
Hopefully not.
Limited swearing.
We will on that Monday.
Mark your calendars.
Mark your calendars.
All right. Okay, any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
And then the third change would be with regard to the veto and the veto override, and those were changes that were made by the, what's it called? The Citizens Government Review Committee made some changes with regard to that. It is found Section 2, Subsection A, in lines, line 36 for Subsection A, and it has to do with just a change in the vote to override mayoral veto. It was six, it'll now be seven.
Again, that was state law.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense.
And then in lines 55 through 77, which was formerly Subsection B, it takes out everything that gives the mayor the authority to do a line item veto. And that wasn't the new state law. That was actually a charter ordinance that was passed back in December of '14, Charter Ordinance 114. And I think that was just an oversight, that that amendment wasn't made to delete all the references to the line item veto, so we've done that in this ordinance.
Okay, questions and/or discussion? I think this is really almost cleanup, carrying on from what we did the last time and now doing it in our own, on our own ordinances. Seeing none, that completes the discussion on Item C. We go to Item D.
D is discussion concerning the procedure of filling the vacancy of City Council District Number 4.
And we, Deputy Mayor Delislaw is going to provide an overview for us.
Thank you, Mayor Wolgas. We, today, we're having the discussion with regards to the council vacancy process. We're going to follow the same protocol that we have followed in the past. The application deadline for this position is going to be at 5:00 PM on May 9th, which is a Monday, which means that the day after, we have a council meeting. So we're going to hopefully establish the date, which is a protocol process, again, of when that, the interviews are going to occur. We have the next Tuesday available for that, that is May 17th, and we're going to conduct the interviews on that day. Again, protocol pretty similar. We have the questions here. I think they were part of the agenda packet for anybody that was interested in looking at those questions. To date, we only have one person that has registered for this position, but typically, we know that those things tend to change as the date gets closer. At this point in time, I will stop to see if there's any questions.
Questions, discussion? And we have this, we have a document in front of you which sets it all out, I think, if there's any questions, and we can explain. Many times, citizens ask us about the process. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Are the questions the same as last time? Do we have new questions? How do we arrive at the questions?
They are the questions that we utilized last time.
And those are provided to the candidates...
Correct.
...the Friday before they are asked. They appear before the council.
I don't see... I think we'll pass them.
I'm sorry.
Were you asking about what questions we ask on the application, or what questions we're going to ask when we interview them?
The interview questions. I'm sorry.
Oh, the interview questions...
Are you going to ask everybody to submit a question?
Correct. We always, like we do every time.
Okay, I just want, well, you said there's...
I'm sorry.
I heard that you were asking about the application. I was saying, yes, they are the same questions of the application.
No, I don't have an interest to apply. I just need to know what I'm telling you.
All right, okay.
No, the council will receive an email from the council office requesting questions that the council is interested in submitting. We will have those questions available the Friday before. Thank you for clarifying.
Right, thank you. We're together on that one. Okay. Any other questions, comments, discussion on that?
Another question. I'm sorry.
Sure, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Trying to make this one clear as possible. How will we handle, I know that Jonathan was on the JADO board. How will we handle that? Will we have another vote?
I think we're...
The council will have another vote on who? Nominations? I mean, I don't think that that person should be just self-appointed, so...
No, no, we will...
Is that how we will handle that?
That will, there will be an agenda item to elect a second-person voting member of JADO the same evening, and also the MTPO board.
Okay.
We, he was on that board, so that's an elected position also from the council. So we'll be electing the new...
On the 17th, we'll do that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Clear?
Am I missing the time on the 17th?
It should be a regular council meeting.
Can we do it here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
First item on the agenda. Other questions? Councilman Jensen?
Thank you. So if, on the 17th, we elect someone, do they sit down and start right away? Oh dear God, the ramp up is going to kill them.
They've sworn in, then following their, following the election. Councilwoman Heller?
There's a JADO meeting on the 11th.
That's correct.
Is there a reason why we were going to wait until the week after?
We thought it would be best for the new council person who is elected could also then possibly be elected to the...
Okay.
I know, it's...
Talk about fast forward.
I know, where it, everything sort of happens there in one week, one time. So I, and as you know, we have the right for a proxy for someone when a voting member can't attend the JADO meeting, and I've spoken to Commissioner Bueller, the chair, about developing a process, and I think somehow the body here will select that person in some manner, like her guidance on that, too. Councilwoman Ortiz?
So are you saying, Mr. Mayor, we don't have a, something in process to do that? We don't have anything to do that, to do a proxy for that vacancy?
Yes, we do. We will.
When will we, when will we...
Well, I hope that's...
Well, will...
Within a week, yeah, we'll get that.
Will the city do it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, because, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, that completes the non-action items, and the, we proceed to the announcements. We have first the preliminary agenda for next week's meeting.
On the May 10th council agenda, we have one mayor proclamation as for Historic Preservation Month. We have two presentations, CIP Project Portal and the City of Topeka First Quarter Financial Report and Project Update. Consent agenda consists of a board appointment to the Topeka Shawnee County Public Library Board of Trustees. On the action items, we'll have denial of a security guard license appeal by Rory Neal, a license agreement renewal for singular wireless. We have the ordinance on the bicycles, skates, skateboards, and pedestrians. We have a CU, I'm sorry, a resolution by Eric Patterson for conditional use permit, a resolution submitted by Donald T. Bell for another conditional use permit. We have an open after midnight license for Bill's Diner. We have established the date for the interviews for Council District Four. The ordinance addressing meeting times, veto, veto override, and governing body vacancies. And then the discussions include changes to the council rules, changes to the cut-back parking ordinance revisions. We will have a discussion on a cut-back parking request located at 1195 Southwest Buchanan, and then discussion on 2017 budget priorities.
Okay, it looks like a energetic meeting next week. We'll start on the council member announcements. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just want to say, I don't know if this was the city manager's idea or the mayor's to recognize the Topeka and the Fire Department employees, but whoever's idea it was, I think it's long overdue, and I think it was a job well done. I did get tickled at the city manager when he said he was going to bed after he communicated what a long night it was. I did get a charge out of that, but I don't think we do that enough, and I think we need to do that. I think we need to tell them we appreciate them and show them, so, job well done. I don't know whose idea that was. I'd also like to say to please keep Deputy Chief Tony Kirk and his family in prayer. He is from Topeka. His son recently moved to Florida and was hit by a car and was killed, and I, they are members of the Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church. That's Pastor Templeton's grandson, great-grandson, yes. And so, Mount Carmel is being hit really hard, and also, they had Joe Fisher, Reverend Joe Fisher, he passed away. So they're being hit pretty hard, and I'd just like to say to keep them, to keep them in prayer. Keep our whole city in prayer. I just see that we've had some challenging times here lately, and I think it's very important, that's why I try to say when school's getting out, so we can just kind of be aware.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Delislaw?
Thank you, Mayor Wolgas. Just a small reminder to the city of Topeka, all the constituents and everybody that's watching, to make sure that they fill out the questionnaire that the team of the city has put out with regards to the budget priorities. The city is in full swing with regards to trying to establish what priorities we're going to have. There's going to be discussion about this pretty soon, and there is a social media way to go ahead and do that, and I know that city manager is going to make some announcements of other things that are happening.
Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. To follow along with more budget stuff, you know, that's our favorite season around these parts. I understand there will be a budget open house at the library next Monday, and I would encourage anyone who wants to know what we do with the revenue that we give the city to attend that. It's a great way to learn about how the money impacts the community around you. Hope to see you there.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I wanted to thank all the city workers that we had so much flooding last week, and I know there was a lot of overtime with all of that going on, so in addition to the Fire Department, the Police Department, all of our city workers who responded to that. Mother's Day is Sunday, so happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers in our community. And with that in mind, I want to, the gem of Topeka this week is the organizations that help our children in our city and our state, and particularly the Child Care Aware, and we have one more week of the Designer Show House to raise money for Child Care Aware. So I worked it last week and went to a lunch. It's a very good cause, and I would encourage everyone to do that. I'm also on the Kansas Children's Service League Board, and last week we had our board meetings, and I got to give the highest distinguished award to Dr. John Evans, who is the Chair of the Stormonts Maternal Fetal Medicine. And we just have a lot of terrific doctors and volunteers in our community, and so I want to recognize all of our organizations that take care of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you. Next month, June 7th, is Topeka Gives at Fairlawn Plaza Mall. I'd love for, to invite you all to come over to my side of town and hang out. Yeah, there's 157 nonprofits in the community, and... Yeah, there's 157 nonprofits in the community, and there will also be a $73,500 total match money available. So every, yeah, every donation will then be doubled, essentially. That's all I had.
Thank you. Councilman Harmon. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to follow up on the employee recognition comments because we got an alert, I think, today, that the city manager is, and management staff are going to do some quarterly recognition for employees as well. And I really like that and appreciate that because everybody is working hard at the various things that they do. Other than that, I had a fun fact, and that is that Amtrak is now offering service to Wichita from Topeka. And $46 round trip includes the train to Newton, and then they've arranged a link of bus service, which is common all over the country, not just here, to get people all the way to and from Wichita. Given the schedule of the cross-country train that comes through Topeka, that is in the middle of the night, but it means that you could get to Wichita first thing in the morning and stay all day and head for, head for home around midnight and have a full day in Wichita or the reverse. So I think that's great news.
Good. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Cleare.
I just, I attended the military ball, and it was very touching and motivating and oh, amazing to see the military. Very thankful for them. Happy Mother's Day. It's a very tough job some days. And I know that because my daughter's visiting from Texas, and she has two small children and a dog. So I experienced that this week. And it is Teacher Appreciation Week, so appreciate your teachers. Give them a Starbucks gift card or something.
Okay, thank you.
Just say it, hand it.
Just an idea. Well, and I aired, typically, the city manager gets the opportunity to go first on announcements, but I was so concerned making sure Councilwoman Ortiz goes first, since she responsible for the invocation, I skipped. So city manager announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I love to listen to Councilwoman Ortiz, so I was happy. So next Monday, Councilmember Jensen had mentioned the budget open house next week, but I don't want to gloss over it too quick because we have a really cool staff, and I do, I do think we need to get better at recognizing them. They're really trying to do things that engage people, make things not just more fun, but engaging and helpful. And we're going to do celebrity readers as part of the budget open house next week to really engage more people. And I see a couple of folks sitting up there that will be celebrity readers also. I don't have the whole list. I think my name is on it too, but this should be a lot of fun. So 6:00 to 7:30 next Monday should be fun and educational. Also, I just love the zoo. I love the partnership between the city and the friends of the zoo. They're kicking off the butterfly, native butterfly exhibit at the zoo. And you don't often get to use Metamorphosis in a city council meeting, so you get to study that at the meeting. And once again, another great event that is a, just a recognition of an organization that's starting to fire on all cylinders. Last Saturday, we had the electronic recycling event. Had 747 cars, 75,000 pounds of electronic gear that were collected, and it was just a tremendous amount of excitement. Today, there was a piece of news that came across that the, excuse me, National Life Group selected Kansas Avenue as on their 2016 list of main streets in recognition, and I don't know who these people are, but that's fantastic. They recognized the work that's being done, and it really saw it as a public-private partnership, a gathering place. The pocket parks are attracting a tremendous amount of attention. And then last thing, tomorrow evening, from 5:30 to 8 o'clock, there will be the all COT picnic, all City of Topeka picnic. We hope to see everybody there. If you haven't, or made your reservations yet, there's still time. We'll slip you in. And this should just be a really good time. And I believe that I am participating in a jousting match with a couple of employees.
Not council members.
You.
One hour.
He picked you out.
I believe, I believe that Amy called me out. She wants to joust me. And I'm getting a pie in the face.
Okay.
Ooh. We get to pay there. What a question.
Do we get to pay to do that? We do?
Sure.
Ooh, what time.
Okay.
I forgot.
Don't you get that information back to me, city manager, as soon as possible?
All right, that completes the announcements. We go to public comment. Joseph Ledbetter.
Might be a little rusty, I haven't been down here in a while. I do want to also chime in on our thin blue line. The chief has been excellent with his police force over at High Crest. We appreciate it, and we just don't have any problems over there, and we're not going to have any. And so I thank him. It was interesting listening to the comments tonight about the jump bikes and things. A few months ago, I brought up to High Crest, I thought we should have a BMX park on the east side in High Crest. And I think that'd be a wonderful idea, and we could get them away from damaging things in downtown. We're going to work on that. There's an old rock quarry. It should have never been a rock quarry, but I think it's a, be a good site for something like that up on Fremont Hill. Speaking of Fremont Hill, and this is about High Crest tonight, we're looking forward to the road being rebuilt. We hope it's going to be starting soon. We know that the previous council approved that. It's going to be great. That's probably one of the worst roads that has been in High Crest for many years, and we now look forward to it being fixed. And we thank you all for participating in that, if you had a vote on that. One of the concerns we still are having in High Crest, and it's going to continue for a while. It takes human capital, it takes determination, it takes passion to enforce things. And what we've got, I was driving through the other day, and I was just counting houses that have no screens. And I didn't get a complete count because there's about 750 houses just in High Crest West, but I would guesstimate there was at least 100 houses without any screens or almost no screens. And these are places where poor people live. And I think it's dishonorable that these people are being treated this way. Summer's coming, a lot of these people can't afford air conditioning. It takes about $100, maybe $120 to put screens on a house. Those are all one-story buildings. This is not difficult. It's not rocket science. We've got about 7,000 private landlords in this town. That's a number I've heard recently. Most of them do what they're supposed to do and take care of their property. But we have a handful that thumb their nose, not only at High Crest, but other NIAs in this town. And live in sumptuous mansions. And yes, I've looked at some of their stuff online that they live in, in other counties. And then they treat our people as if they should live in caves. And it, the thing about not having screens is, think about it. It lets in mosquitoes, flies, potentially criminals. This is a health hazard. It's got to be, it's got to be dealt with. And it doesn't take any act of Congress to write that up. I mean, you can see them right from the street when they don't have screens. So it's not just the screens, it's the lack of working furnaces in the winter. I came across two of those situations in the last six months in the wintertime where the same landlord would not answer the phone and fix the furnaces. And by the way, just coincidentally, those two individuals who were renting happened to be veterans. What a great way to treat a veteran. No heat for their kids in the wintertime. And it was not acted on in a timely fashion. This kind of activity gets at the reputation of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That completes the public comment for this evening. We have two executive sessions. If the city attorney would state the parameters for the first one, please.
Motion would be for the governing body to recess into executive session for a period of 20 minutes to consult with the city's legal counsel regarding attorney-client privileged matters. In order to aid the discussion, following persons should be present: City Manager Jim Colson, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, and myself.
I'm sorry, would you state the time?
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Dela Eastlake moves, and Councilman Jensen seconds, going to executive session with those parameters. The discussion, all those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
Nine yes.
Yes, we will go into executive session when the room is clear.